Roll call. I am here, Rebecca Phil.
Here.
Zach.
Here.
Mike Ahern is not here. John?
Here.
Mark has told us he can't make it. Um, Mike Bouchard is here.
Yeah, I'm right.
Um, Peter Julia is not here. Steve Whitman's not here. Susan?
Yeah.
So, do I have to, I have to ask if Mike Bouchard cannot attend for some reason?
Yes.
Yeah. Mike, um, for you to participate as a voting member, which I will invite you to do since we um, are down a number of full-time members, all I need to do is ask you if you are unable to participate in person this evening. That's for you, Mike Bouchard. And you're on mute.
I am, I am unable to participate in person.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to invite you and Susan to both be voting members this evening. Um, when Mike Ahern shows up, he can participate in the discussion, but since he's not here at the time the meeting starts, we'll just have him be a, um, non-voting member this evening.
And Susan, you've been pointed, right?
Yes. Both Susan and Mike Bouchard can participate as full voting members this evening. All right, next, um, we need to review the minutes from the January 6th meeting. Any comments, edits, corrections for the minutes?
Nothing stood out to me.
Perhaps a motion to approve the minutes is written.
I'll move second.
Any further discussion? All right. Motion on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right. June, have we received any communications for the board?
Nope.
Nothing that isn't, we won't be addressing later.
All right, let's move on to our second, um, proposed zoning amendments. Um, so let me get out my folder. We have several mostly administrative changes to our zoning ordinance that we are proposing. This is the second hearing this evening. And we will start, uh, let's see, the best way to go through this is just, um, Roman numeral by Roman numeral, you think, June?
Yep, so I also, um, did a handout that you have in front of you. It's kind of small text, but that is just the individual pages from the zoning ordinance, um, where I just wanted to highlight those. I could do a screen share, but I think you have it in front of you. I can have a couple of extra copies here of the audience. Does that make sense? Like, the handwritten numbers are also numbers we can reference to, because I did not do another set by, um, topic.
Okay.
I felt like at this point, we should just go through section by section in the ordinance.
All right, so we will start with section 202. And this is to address the definition of offense and accessory structure. This is, um, on the handout, pages one and two. And in the zoning ordinance itself, it's on page five and 10, if you'd like to follow along. So this just changes the definition that we have in, as, of fence definition to an enclosure or barrier constructed of wood, masonry, stone, wire metal, or other manufactured material, or combination materials erected as a boundary or to enclose, screen, or separate areas. Am I have that right? What am I missing here? My reference documents, I've got four different things in front of me. Um...
The second part is just removing fences over four feet high from the definition of, of a structure.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Sorry.
Let's fill in the other part of it.
Should have copied it and colored it.
That's the part on page 10.
No, I can, I can find the, the line, so, um, all right, so unless there's discussion on the board, I'm just going to open this up to a public hearing. It is 6:35. I'm opening the public hearing. It'll stay open until we are done discussing all of the proposed zoning ordinances, zoning ordinance amendments. We only have one zoning ordinance implement, that's thankfully. Um, all right, so any questions from the audience in person here? Frank?
Hi, I'm Frank Miller, and my concern on this is, uh, you're updating the definition, but under, uh, section 414, which is fences, page 33 of the ordinance, our existing ordinance, it has an element under D1, uh, needs to carry over. That is an exemption in agricultural zone and other, uh, activities requiring specialized fences, uh, which I have one, and the co-op has one, they have a, um, very high fence required around the substations for safety. And so these are required by the federal government or state government in compliance. So I'm hoping that this, that's stated in there, D1, which was, uh...
So you're to, so, okay, um...
Continue that as part of the definition.
So yeah, this is just basically saying that we're not including the word fence in, or using, defining the structury, the accessory structure as a fence. So I think we can address this when we get to section 414, which we'll do in a little bit.
Okay, all right, excuse me.
Thank you. We're, we're not, we've been in the past addressing everything by topic, and now we're addressing it in order in which it appears in the zoning ordinance. Just to spice things up a little bit. Um, all right. Comments on the proposed change to section 202 from our home audience?
Everyone's raising their hand on Zoom here, so.
And nobody's popping onto the screen, okay. So unless there's further discussion from the board, we will move on to section 304. All right, 304. This clarifies setback requirements of non-conforming structures.
So that is on pages three and four of the handout, or pages 15 and 16 of the actual ordinance. Um, the change is at the bottom of 15 and top of 16. It's basically taking out that text because it goes into, we're moving it to another spot later in the ordinance. In that diagram.
So we will discuss its addition, or its reinsertion later on, but this was really just, um, something that was kind of out of place, so this is a true administrative change. Any comments from the public on the proposed changes to section 304? Any comments or question from the, the audience who is participating remotely? All right, we will move on to section 401.2, which is on page five of the handout, or page 18 in the zoning ordinance. This is a, um... This again is just another administrative change where we were...
Let me explain that one.
Yeah, you can, it'd be better if you explained this.
So 401.2 is about existing lots of record, and there's some text there that is no longer, um, well, first of all, it's confusing, um, the way it's worded, and there was a section in there that, um, just didn't, just didn't make sense. It was conflicting, basically. So we're just simplifying it to say, a building may be constructed on any lot of record in any zone in accordance with section 405. So basically, if somebody has a non-conforming lot, they can build on it, provided they can meet setbacks and other things, so.
Discussion from the board? Comments from our audience here this evening about our home audience? Breasing through this. Next up, section 403, to address use of recreational vehicles and tents as temporary uses and dwellings. This can be found in section, uh, or in, on page five of the handout, or page 19 in the zoning ordinance.
Page six of the handout, sorry.
Oh, whoops, six, page six of the handout. I'm going to cross these off so I can see it better, and page 19 in the zoning ordinance.
Would you like me to explain?
That would be wonderful.
So this is, um, as we've talked about before, the temporary uses and structures, the existing text is really what's now there in, um, 403.2, with one additional change, but basically the other three parts that we're adding here are to try to, uh, help us address, um, public health and safety, uh, and defining the amount, the amount of time somebody can use a, um, sort of temporary, non-permanent structure as a dwelling, specifically recreational vehicles, um, tents, that kind of thing. This is to help address a problem here in Plymouth, so.
All right, questions from the board, or comment from the board before I invite the public to speak? All right, um, folks here tonight, any?
Yep.
Yes, unfortunately, this, um, ordinance changed. The old one was not very clear, and that's probably why we're working on a new one. But the new one catches too many other items. First, it talks about, um, living quarters and, uh, going from a, um, permanent structure to a temporary permit, which is confusing, and then the narrative talks about operation and use of a, uh, um, office trailer for purpose of construction or supervision. And, uh, and it, it gets into, uh, the elements of, uh, a person being able to store their trailers and store their property on their property, which I think that is an overreach, uh, as far as, uh, a person's ability to store their personal private property on their property. And, uh, the other is that you have, I have a list here of non-residential living, uh, dwelling, or human habitation trailers. This is office equipment, generator, storage, shop, horse trailers, and hay trailers. I spent some time with the town clerk trying to get a definition printout of trailers that, uh, we could register in the town legally, and then, of course, obviously, use and place and store on our properties. And, um, there, there's so many, when you try, I'm trying to get a definition, list a definition of recreational vehicles, trailers and such, between the state, which you would register them with, and the towns', uh, list. And then, any life safety, uh, code systems, fire, international building code, and so on. And I haven't been able, because of COVID, I haven't been able to, I'm not online, so, um, I'm restricted to whatever I can find through, uh, books and magazines and stuff. But this, what you have, talks about, starts off talking about, uh, permanent residency, then talks about uses of the office trailer, and then finishes up with, um, you can go from that permanent structure, which is not allowed, into a temporary permit that you would have for a year with a one-year extension. The, um, uh, office trailer, when used on-site, is never hooked up to in-ground septic system, because usually you use an office trailer when you're developing a major system, and you use porta-potties with them. They don't have water. They may have, if there is available, uh, temporary, uh, power put in, uh, if there's a line there. But, uh, once that's off, then the trailers go back to the owner, which they store on-site. So I have an office trailer. Uh, I have a, a shop trailer, which is used to have tools and equipment that I would use to maintain my property, both of which I register, but I store on property. And I, there's no living, and there's no way you can live in them. But I store, that's personal property I store on-site. And according to this new system here, that would not be allowed.
I don't read it that way.
No, I don't read it that way.
I have a hard time understanding that as well. Can you, can you, can you point out the part that, so, uh, my understanding is of this is that we're trying to regulate whether people can live in, use them as habitation. I don't, I think storing them seems, I don't think storing them is prohibited.
If you look at the bottom, section 4, or 4.4? 403.4.
Yep.
You look at that, and it includes, if you delete the storage part, then yes, it would stay within the realms, uh, of, uh, of the use of an item to inhabit for, uh...
Oh, I see.
Living, okay?
Not used for storage, that part?
Right.
I see.
So, and another one is, that it trips up on is, um, with this lighting here, um, home occupation, which is under, um, okay.
It doesn't mention home.
So I, I think 403.4 is specifically referring to recreational vehicles being used as storage.
Right, okay.
Not, not necessarily, like, if you have a, an enclosed trailer, I don't think it would apply to that.
Yeah, and a lot of the other storage structures are going to be covered as accessory structures.
Uh, okay, uh, I, you know, I just, uh, so like, under, uh, home occupation, section 412, which is permitted in all zones, and then the 412, uh, decimal E, outdoor storage of material and equipment shall be, uh, screened, which is part of the intent of our setback ordinance. But I, you know, the way I read it was that no other types of trailers or storage could be kept on-site under that 40, the last one, which was pretty broad in scope.
I, I think, I think 403.4 is pretty specific to unoccupied recreational vehicles.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. In my interpretation.
Yes, that's what it says, yeah.
All right, well, that's my concern, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern, and thank you for sharing it with us.
All right, anyone in our home audience this evening would like to make a comment on this proposed change?
Um, we have somebody online. Henry Ahern has a question, has his hand raised.
Okay. Henry, go ahead.
Okay. My, my big concern with this whole section is the government telling me, or other people, where I can or cannot live, or what I can and cannot live in on my property. If I can only afford a recreational vehicle, and that's what I own, and I want to park it on a piece of property that I own, and I want to put a porta-potty out back, the way they did for centuries, we had, uh, outhouses with the little moons on them, out back, if we could use that for our sanitation. For many, many years, we did not have running water into our houses. We got it from a well, or we got it in from a stream, or we got it from somewhere else. Well, we stopped at Crystal Springs and got water. Our military, when they deploy around the world, they live in tents. And that seems to be sufficient for our military. So if I made the choice to live in a tent, why should the government be telling me I cannot do that? Right? I can understand the sanitary, so we take care of the sanitary. We put in an outhouse, a porta-potty, some type of facility, but to tell me that I can't live in the only vehicle or only conveyance that I have available to me seems to be a great overstretch, stretch of government and overreach, uh, preventing me a place to live that I can afford. We have a, not a big homeless population in Plymouth, and certainly within the country, we have homeless populations. And part of the homeless population is because they can't afford $2,000 a month in rent, or $1,000 a month in rent, to have a place to live. So I, I don't think that we should be telling people what type of vehicle or what type of facility they choose to live in. And that's my comment.
All right, thank you. Other comments from folks at home? All right, any further discussion on this one from the board? Good to move on? Next up, section 405, to, to address non-conforming lots, uses, and structures. This is on page seven through nine in the handout, and on pages 20 through 22 in the zoning ordinance. June, would you do the honors again?
So the current section 405 about non-conformity isn't comprehensive enough in many ways. Um, it doesn't really adequately address, fully address lots, uses, and structures. So our, um, changes are to try to clarify, um, what can, can and can't be done with lot expansion or changes in how we address non-conforming lots, uses, and structures. Some of the existing text is not, again, is, um, hard to interpret at times and conflicting, so by breaking it into those three categories of lot, non-conforming lots, structures, and uses, is to help address that. Um, this is the area on structures that we brought in, that previously, um, deleted text from section 304, so that, at the end of it there, about additions and using setbacks, there's no changes to that. We just moved it from one part of the ordinance into here, because that's really where it belongs. We've had previous discussions about, you know, demolition, destruction, um, it can be used an existing footprint or foundation, um, that kind of thing. So this is more in keeping with, um, the state statutes and general good zoning practice on how to address non-conformity with much better clarity.
All right, discussion from the board? Comments from our home audience? Or, sorry, our audience here and now, for our audience who is not present in this building. I don't see any hands up, so I think we're okay. If the board agrees, then we'll just move on. This section, I think, we've addressed quite thoroughly. And I think we've, um, definitely is an improvement. Next up, section 415, to clarify requirements regarding fences. This is on pages 10 and 11 on the handout, and 33 and 34 in the zoning ordinance.
Would you like me to clarify? Yes, please, thank you. So we've had some issues with just how fences were addressed throughout the ordinance, and so some of the changes in the definition, and then into this section, again, removes, um, conflicting comments. We, it was basically, I, you couldn't determine whether fences were allowed, in some cases were allowed by specialist exception, or you needed a variance. And when you have trouble interpreting, sometimes you have to go with the more stringent, which would mean a variance, so that actually, this actually removes some of those barriers to having fences, um, saying basically that, uh, different height levels there, four feet are permitted, um, anything over six feet needs a special exception. Um, we again had, uh, maintained the same text about common fences, um, that have to be one feet off the property line. That's not a change, it's just a reorganization. As is about, um, needing, clarifying when you need a building permit for one over four feet. Uh, and then, on the last, which is on the next page, um, page 34 of the ordinance, um, 11 of the handout, fences shall be exempt from, um, requirements for reasonable agricultural or safety purposes. So I think some of Frank's comments before accommodate, yes, around transmission, certainly if the state's going to require it, we, you know, they're higher power, they, we can't override that in any agricultural purposes, so are exempt.
Okay.
Which is what it currently also says.
All right, so we think we addressed Frank's comment about, okay. Does that make sense, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any discussion, comments from the board on this proposed change? Questions from the audience? Here or, I keep looking directly at you, Frank. Any questions from the folks at home?
No hands are raised, so.
Okay, great. Just one more. Um, section 1204.3, to address, or to establish specific criteria for special exceptions to multi-unit dwellings. I can explain this one. This is, um, more, uh, we're not making any changes to what is considered a multiple unit dwelling. We're not increasing it, right now it's three to six units. We're not making any changes to that, but in, looking into making those changes, we determined that some criteria for special exceptions, which are required for multi-unit dwellings in all, all zones except for the village commercial, I believe?
Yes.
That, and we heard from a zoning board member that it would be helpful to have some criteria for any of our special exceptions. So while we pulled increasing the number of units, we kept the special exception criteria. So, um, so we added six criteria. They are on page 12 of the handout, and page, um, will be put on page 64 to 65, um, in the zoning ordinance, which prior, or currently as stands, just has, um, a criteria for multiple unit dwellings in only the agricultural zone, but these criteria will apply to everywhere except for the village commercial, where you don't need a special exception. All right, comments or questions, or, uh, discussion from the board? Audience here, audience at home. Names shifting around, but my glasses are either foggy or dirty, and I can't really see.
I've got it displayed, the list of participants, so I, yeah, I've got the gallery view, so. No hands are raised, and...
Record time, all right.
Last call for comments?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, thank you. Um, any last call, or this, any comments, this is the last call for comments before I close the public hearing. So if anyone has any comments about these proposed zoning changes, now is the time to speak, or you can express your opinion when you vote in March. All right, closing the public hearing at 6:59.
Rebecca, how are these going to appear on the warrant? Is this going to be a single warrant item for all of them? Are they going to be grouped in some, like, how?
I think June has gotten some language that I think...
Yes, I have, um...
They usually show up in checkered form?
I had sent it out with the last meeting, and I have a draft warrant article somewhere here. And, uh, yeah, they're going to be grouped, I think, in four.
Four or five, Warren.
Four, okay, multiple, so it's not a one, single shot.
I don't have it right here. It's on, right on my desk to finalize tomorrow, so. I think I pulled it out from my, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, we have drafted that.
My biggest question was, is it multiple or single?
Yes, it's going to be broken, kind of topically, um, explaining it.
More in the way that we introduced and talked about them in the first hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it kind of summarizes the changes without every single detail, right? Or is it?
I could probably find the warrant if you want to look at it, but...
Do you want to see it? Do you want June to pull it up now?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay. So you guys need to vote to make sure you want to go ahead with...
Thank you, that would be important, wouldn't it? All right, so we have seven proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. We've heard the public speak, and I think now all we need is a motion to move these forward to, um...
Town meeting?
Yeah, the town meeting.
I would move that we, uh...
I would move that we push the zoning ordinance amendments forward to the voters with the support of the planning board.
I'll second.
Hey, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, yeah.
There was, oh, there was one question here from Henry. He's got his hand back up again. So, maybe we missed something from Henry.
Just a quick question. How soon are the final wording for the warrant articles going to come out? Do we have to wait for the warrant, or is there a way we can get a copy of how you're going to word those warrant articles?
I have it drafted already. I need to finalize it tomorrow, get it to the town manager, but we can post it on the website under the zoning ordinance section.
Thank you.
So, do, did you get everybody's vote? Or doing...
Yes, we had, because...
Was there, I heard, I said, were there any opposed or abstentions? I think that's where I was.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. All right, so those will get moved on. Very satisfying to close this zoning ordinance chapter. Sorry, I keep hitting the microphone. I think it's closer than usual. Okay, on to site plan review. For an application from Thomas and Sandy Hughes for their property on Fairgrounds Road, PID number 207-022, for construction of a 24 by 40 addition to enlarge an existing shop. This property's in the ag zone. All right, so, do we have representative?
Yes. So, just before we have them come up, I just also want to say hi to Peter Julia, who has arrived, and I don't, I know the board hasn't met, so we can do more of an introduction later. But welcome, Peter. If you wanted to come sit at the table, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, you're welcome to join this at the table, or you can observe from afar, that's fine as well.
Whatever you're comfortable with, so. He's a new alternate member, so, anyway. So, yes, tonight for the, this application, Tom and Sandy Hughes are here in the audience to help present this. You have the materials in front of you, and if you want them to come forward and explain what they're doing.
Yeah, so, just so you guys know, what we usually do is, we have our applicants present a brief description of their project. We need to make a ruling on whether your application is complete or not. Then, we can open it up for a public hearing for discussion. The board can discuss, and if we decide it's appropriate this evening, we can make a ruling on your project. So, welcome, one, both of you, to come up and speak about this project.
Well, I'm Tom. My wife's Sandy. We're the owners and operators of Small Engine Barn right here in Plymouth. Probably about 10 years now we've been doing business here. And we've just plain outgrown the shop. So, as you can see, we just want to put a small addition on, just to be able to get more work in and more work out. That's pretty much it.
All right, so, when I look at the application, and that's what the plans are in front of us here?
Yep, there's two sets of plans for the two different applications tonight. So, this, you have one, there's larger copies in front of you here. So, a couple things that I can explain that I had on my staff, yeah, they utilize an old boundary line adjustment survey to draw in the addition. And so, I did go and meet with them at the site, because I wasn't as familiar, I hadn't been there myself in quite a few years. And we walked around out back where this addition's going. It's just a 24 by 40 addition. One thing that I did want to see was that the site is already disturbed. It's basically storage outdoor of existing equipment, you know, snow blowers, lawn mowers, that are, yeah, all kinds of stuff. So, and their shop is very crowded, so they, this addition is to give them more workspace in there. There's plenty of circulation. I did ask them to add by hand, you know, draw in sort of where the driveway was. I did take the liberty to color it a bit, and what you're looking at, Rebecca, is actually for the next one, so, sorry. So, it's just the two, there's two sheets. One had, did, the 11 by 17 has, they did do a nice drawing of the design of it, and then that site plan has the colored, that I had to kind of add it in to kind of color some areas. So, this is one of those applications where, you know, I appreciate this small business trying to work this out on their own. There's plenty of parking there. It's gravel, so it's not paved and striped. It's kind of been a working operation. It's really just kind of covering part of their existing work area.
And no plans to expand parking or anything like that?
No, nothing.
And just looking through the application this afternoon, I saw that there are a number of waivers that are being asked for, and those all, those all made sense to me. It seemed appropriate for the site. Other questions from the board, specifically about the completeness of this application?
Did, I just have a question. Was the holder of the easement notified on the voter list?
Yes. All right. If there's no other questions from the board about the completeness of this application, we could entertain a motion to accept the application as complete.
I move we accept the application as complete?
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sentence? Okay, so, application is complete, and back to the board, any questions about the substance of this application beyond its completeness, or I can open it up for a public hearing?
I've got a question. I don't think this is really an issue, but there aren't any setback issues with easements, are there?
I had the same question. I mean, setbacks only apply to lot boundaries, don't they? I mean, you can build right up to an easement if they choose to.
So, from the town's point of view, we have setbacks from property lines, not from easements.
Right.
So, if they have any, if there's anything in their deed that's an issue with the easement holder, that's a private matter for them to worry about, so. And there is space in there, you know?
Yeah, that was my concern. I noticed that the building appeared to be offset. I didn't know if that was because you were trying to make clearance from the easement, or if it was for architectural reasons, but, either way. As long as the easement holder was notified that there's a project there, they have had opportunity to comment.
Other questions from the board?
Do you want to see plans, Peter? Do you have any questions?
All right, it is 7:09. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. I welcome the public to speak at this time about this application, so if you wish to do so. Frank?
I'm Frank Miller. I stand in support of the application. It seems like a very good use of existing property and expands our business, and I'd like to see approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Anyone who is participating remotely this evening wish to speak? All right. It's still 7:09. Is that what I said before? And I'm going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board. Further discussion? Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep. I would like to note that we had a very, a staff report that recommended that we could move forward, and I haven't seen anything that causes concern here. It's certainly not encroaching on, it doesn't appear to be encroaching on setbacks. There's an existing difference there. I'm inclined to move forward.
I've been to the Small Engine Barn many times, and they need the space.
All right. Would someone perhaps like to make a motion to approve this application?
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? I didn't think so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, next up, we have a site plan review application from Plymouth Professional Place for their property at Highland Street, PID number 108 dash zero, oh, sorry, 108 dash 48, to reconstruct a parking lot, improve site drainage at a sidewalk to and from the buildings, and to construct a 480 square foot garage. This is in the single-family residential zone. All right, so it looks like our applicant or representatives are joining us remotely this evening, so same, same deal for these folks, that presentation on the application, any specific waivers you're seeking, and then we'll make a ruling on whether or not it's complete, and we'll open the public hearing, and then if we determine it's appropriate, we'll make a ruling on the application this evening.
Yeah, so it looks like we have Kevin Leonard on here, Ed Rory, Sunshine Fisk, all from, Kevin's the engineer for this project.
Okay, so whoever's going to present this to us, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Leonard from North Penn Engineering. I'm the civil engineer. Work on this project. We're in Concord, New Hampshire. I'm here with Sunshine, who's the CFO of the organization, and Ed Rory, who is head of facilities and special projects. So, I gather you guys have the plan in front of you. Do you want, I have to share my screen, or I can just talk about the project? I don't know what you want me to do.
If you want to highlight any part of the plan, you're welcome to share your screen, if, if we can authorize that.
Okay.
I like to talk through pictures. I suspect you do, you do as well.
Nice job, pal.
Yep.
So, the property is on the south side of Highland Street. It's an existing office condominium. It's in the single-family residential district. We had a recent survey done last summer. You see that there's a pretty wide curb cut here at the entrance of Highland Street. There's a site sign here in the middle. There's a great plan of instructions on the property. The National Health Center has recently, in the last couple of years, we have the building in the rear, and is operating the local services there from that building. They also occupy 77 Highland Street, and are using that office space for staff that is doing, providing services off-site. And recently, 79 Highland Street had that as the third member of the condominium, and was, that property was recently purchased by the National Medical Health Center, and is being rented back to the former owner, who owns, or owns and operates their solar facility at that site. I have a rendered version of the site plan, just to kind of show you, the limits of pavement. There is a gravel parking lot out back with some parking, kind of informal back there. The site generally slopes from south to north towards Highland Street. It's a pretty decent grade, about eight to 10 percent. The goal of the project primarily, when it first kind of came to fruition, was the parking lot's in really rough shape, and they want to reconstruct it, improve it, and try to, it'll get some striping down, try to accommodate pedestrians a little bit better, also provide enough parking. And the other thing that they find to be a problem is that with the lack of drainage on the site, everything is just flowing across the whole driveway, and it's a pretty good grade. And so, the thought was, there's an existing drain line that runs right here on our side of the street. The thought was that we could formalize the drainage up into the site and tie it in directly to the stormwater system in the street. We met with the highway manager this summer and talked to him about that, and given the circumstances out there with the fact that drainage is coming up the street and kind of hitting the shoulder and then working its way down the street, he felt like it would be an improvement to the street and our site. So, I've got an overview sheet on sheet two, just trying to show you the relationship of the other lots in the area. We have this land right here, and we realize that lot is simply bigger than most of the lots nearby. From what I'm gathering, most of these properties around us are either single-family or multifamily houses. This is a removals plan, basically showing the limits of work. So, it's planning to remove all the pavement and the gravel here. This dark line is the approximate limits of disturbance. While we're doing the project, we think, we thought we would rebuild the sidewalks that come into these other two buildings out front. There's a rendered version of our site plan. You can see that we're tightening up the driveway to make it more conventional. We're planning to move the site sign, which sits somewhere in this vicinity now, and move it up here to meet the required 15-foot setback. We also are planning to put a directional sign at the entrance, because we understand it's allowed by ordinance, and it just helps with weight fight, finding and that type of thing to the site. We're proposing 39 parking spaces, 24-foot wide aisles, 19-foot spaces, 19-foot deep spaces. We're adding a sidewalk, which would be against a granite curb. Some clientele walks to the site and staff, you know, with the proximity of downtown, tends to walk downtown for different things, and so we're trying to create some connectivity between the street and the site. The sidewalk is on the other side of the street, so we'd need to cross the road to get to the sidewalk on Highland Street. I should have mentioned that in 1981, there was a variance for the, for the sign for the property, which allowed for 30 square feet of surface area. So, the idea is that this sign would have that size sign moving forward. Let's kind of move ahead. We're proposing granite curb on the west Philly side of the site as well, so that we're able to kind of direct the water towards the curb line and pick up water as we go, and then tie it into a drain manhole in the street down here. I spoke with the highway manager this afternoon, just to touch base with him. I know that he had received the plans and wanted to see if he had any concerns or questions I could answer for him. He seemed like it was what he expected. I was, we've talked about when we met with him last summer. This project is planning a lot to engineer a review to the town engineer, and obviously we'll be addressing any of his comments when that review comes back. We are proposing some vegetative buffer into here. Right now, there's a multifamily home here that has parking, and the sort of, the boundary between one property and the other is sort of vague. I guess in the past, there's been people that are parked in this driveway that would pull out onto the subject property through here, and then go out this way. We're trying to discourage that. We're proposing parking here, so we are proposing a split rail fence along the property line, and then some plantings into here, just to sort of define that boundary a little bit, and just sort of dress it up a little bit. The applicant's proposing boxwood for that location. We are sort of formalizing the parking lot out back. The main building here is two-story, the, for the business end of the building is on the first floor, and the entrance is here. That's where patients come in, and, you know, the main office is right here. But there's a door on the second story, which is sort of a staff entrance, so the idea is that probably staff would park back here, and then be able to enter into the building to the break room and that type of thing, which is upstairs. The applicant is interested in building a new garage, which you can see... you can see, we have right up here at the back of the site, 20 by 24. We submitted an example of the type of structure they're talking about, they're really looking to have, be able to have storage for maintenance goods on the property, and they also have a, a van that they'd like to get undercover during the winter, so that when they go to use it, they don't have to deal with clearing up snow and that type of thing. And it would probably be a set of stairs to a second floor that would be used for storage. We have provided a road control plan, pretty typical stuff, stabilized construction, exit, in-depth protection at the, at the catch basins during construction. We have also been to find some cell fence on the perimeters of the works to make sure that we're containing any sediment and, and limiting exposure to other parts of the site and/or the neighbor. And we have a set of structural details covering all the materials we need, you know, curb, drainage, signage, and that type of thing. I guess, that said, we have been working with staff, and a couple things have, we've been kind of working through some things with them, a couple of things that, that are sort of outstanding, one kind of is a recent development, is between the two front structures, there's an existing temporary tent structure there, which, when we submitted the application, they were thinking that that would come down. That tent was put there by, by, by the third building, which is, I believe, number 79, 79 Highland Street, which Lake Region Mental Health Center recently purchased, and then now has a tenant, the former owner, in that building.
It's not the former owner, Kevin, it's, it's just a tenant that was previously in that space.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying. So the tenant is looking to keep the tent in place, and I guess we're trying to determine, and June is going to look into this a little bit further, whether or not that structure requires a building permit, does it have a building permit, no sorts of things. I don't know the, all the answers to that right now, I don't know if June has any new information regarding that.
I do not at this time, I did not have a chance today to look into that, because I knew that we needed other details, so we will, we will consider that soon. I don't believe there was a building permit of any type, I think it's a tent that's just gone up, and has been there for probably over a year at least, and so it's become kind of a permanent tent, which is something to consider. It's kind of a hoop.
I believe there's a food co-op that does weekly pickups there, and I think it was moved there during COVID, when they stopped having the outdoor farmer's market. So it may, their, their goal may not be to keep it there forever, I'm not sure, but, you know, I guess we can look into that.
That's correct, it is for her supplies and whatnot, for the CSA, or the co-op.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we've gotten a lot of information from the applicant, we've not yet made a ruling if this is complete or not, so I think that's, now's a good time for us to, to talk about that a little bit.
My only question about completeness is, has to deal with the timing of the garage construction. I see that it's kind of identified as phase two, and I believe, don't we have a, a constraint on how long our approvals are good for? So if, if we were to approve this, and everything were to be done except the garage, is there not some period of time by which, if the garage isn't built, it would require resubmission of a site plan at that point? Should we clarify that in our conditions if we're going to consider that?
I think in terms of accepting the application as complete, then that's not really a fact, you know, they're saying it, and then, so yes, we should get more clarity about that.
I guess my, yeah, my only question is, is there a more defined time scale for the construction of that that would help us understand whether or not this might, whether or not we need more information?
Yeah, we should get more information about that, but I don't think it really affects the completeness, because they gave the design of it, so it's a matter of, probably at some point, if this gets to be approved, there'll be a condition of granting them three years to put it up, or two years or something, you know, whatever timeline they need.
All right.
All right, that's a good question. Other comments from the board about the completeness of this application?
Peter's got his red pen out, so.
We'll probably get to your thoughts in a second.
I just really appreciate the effort that's been put into kind of tidying up this property, and.
I agree. It's nice to see the investment that's already happened there.
Yeah.
Yep. I would move that we accept the application as complete.
Second.
And there's still room for discussion if anyone has completed.
Does anyone have anything else to add before we take a vote? All right, motion on the table, all those in favor of accepting the application as complete?
Aye.
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 Michael?
I think he's been on mute, we, yeah. Not super worried about it right now, so, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so application is complete. Now, let's talk a little bit more about this application, because we got a good report from June, and I have been to the site too, and met with them back this fall, and, yeah. And one of the recommendations is we do, we really do need to see the town engineers report before, I think, before we could make a ruling on this, on this application. I think because there is significant drainage work being done, and recognizing that it is certainly improving this site, we still need to, as we would with any application that has this kind of drainage work being done, stormwater work, we need to have our engineer review it.
And I, can I give a little update? Yeah, so we did get a estimate of $1,000 for Mike Vignali's review. I've drafted the escrow agreement and sent it to the applicant, I guess just yesterday, we got comments, one change they wanted to see, which was a good one, about sharing reports, and we had to just clean up getting their legal name properly in there. So I've sent that back, and I guess I dealt with Ed Drury on that, and it sounds like that's moving ahead, they'll get the money to us, and Mike's ready to look at it pretty quickly, I think, so it should be, certainly.
Actually, it's ready to go, and I can deliver it tomorrow or Monday.
Okay.
Okay, so I think I am not comfortable ruling on this application without the engineer's report at this point, so I think we could, we can talk a little bit about the phase two, and how we might want to do that, or, go ahead, June.
I would also suggest you open the public hearing, and get any comments, and then continue the hearing to, okay, just reminding you about that.
No, that's good, thank you.
Can I ask a clarification about phase two, besides the timeline issue? Is phase two a definite plan, or is that a maybe plan?
So I can address that, it's really cost dependent. You know, we're, look, in the process of gathering estimates, and as you know, lumber prices and whatnot have really fluctuated in the recent months. So we're sort of waiting to see, when all the numbers come in, if we're able to afford that right from the get-go, then we would pursue that concurrently. But if we need to save or fundraise, then that would push that out, you know, a few months or so. Our goal is to have it done ideally by next winter, so that our van that we use to transport patients is covered, and we don't have staff trying to climb up and remove snow and, and whatnot from the top of that, that vehicle.
So that timeline, I mean, it, it doesn't sound optional, it's not like you're definitely going to do this, and the timeline, even if you push it out, is going to be pretty short, and it sounds almost like.
That's our hope.
Yeah, I think, I think we could certainly add, as in our approval, if we need to add a little bit more time for phase two, I think that should be fine. And we could certainly add as a condition that any, you know, which I think we'd have, is kind of, goes unsaid, but if there's any significant changes, that we would need to have it, an amended site plan for, you know, a location, or size, or anything like that. So. I'm going to open it up to the public hearing, unless anyone has, any of the board wishes to say anything at this point. All right, 7:30. Frank has nothing to say, how about, or not at this moment, how about anybody in our home audience who have any comments?
Bill Bolton's got his hand raised.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so as a former board member of Lake Region Mental Health Center, and High Sunshine, I have to support this project, and I'm very pleased that you were able to purchase the building that, that houses Parry. I thought that was an issue for a while, but that kind of completes the whole, the whole shebang right there. And I'm just, have a question about, I'm very supportive about correcting the drainage issues, and also limiting the entrance to there, to that facility, I think it's a really good, good move. But the, the sidewalk, is it kind of like Deadhead on, on Highland Street, or is there a crosswalk nearby where that sidewalk ends, or, let's look through that.
Well, maybe our select board could do something about a crosswalk.
Well, this one, where, where is the crosswalk? Is it nearby?
It's either going to be Broadway or, or Avery, I would think. Or no, there's another street right there.
Is there any reason, is there any reason you couldn't put a crosswalk in the middle of, of the block there? I mean, if there are no other crosswalks?
Well, I think Kevin should comment on this too, because when I went and visited the site, I asked the same question, like, kind of saying, oh wow, this would be good, because I had actually walked up there and had to scurry across Highland Street. So there is a crosswalk, I believe, just passed it towards Broadway, where some of the student rentals come in. So we did talk about, could that be moved, would that make sense, how much is that used? It really is going to be something for the highway manager to review, and we haven't, he hasn't commented on that. You know, the, the neighboring properties on that side of the street, and adding in sidewalk, you know, from a high-density residential spot, I think they come in off of sort of Hawthorne Street, over towards Highland and Cross, and then come down. So that, kind of observing it, seemed like that, keeping it there, but could we connect to it? Was that practical? Probably not. You know, adding another crosswalk so close by does not make sense, and adding mid, you know, DOT doesn't like to, I know it's a town road, but in general DOT won't add in mid, mid-line crosswalks, I think they call them. They only like to see them at intersections, because they're kind of a, you know, so to add one there, or move it maybe eventually, but it's, it, but at least with the internal circulation, this is a good, a good thing, and gives the possibility for something in the future. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right, other comments from the public? All right.
I've got my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Henry, yep.
I just, my only, when I looked at the, the plan there, my concern would be people stopping on Highland Street to unload passengers at that sidewalk, if it was a, if they wanted to drop someone off quick, and not deal with coming into the parking lot, have to turn around and things like that, that you might have cars stopping on Highland Street to drop passengers off, and the way Highland Street is, that wouldn't be a good thing. So they might need a sign that says no stopping, no parking, no stopping at any time, or something like that. Just a thought.
All right, thanks, Henry.
If we were to do that, that'd be on Highland Street, so it would have to be a recommendation from the town, I think. Just because it would probably not be on our property.
I do, I do think that that is, that it's an area that does see, especially on Thursday afternoons, when the local Food Plymouth is doing their pickup and drop-off. I mean, I guess I don't see that as more of a concern at this place in particular than many other businesses, so.
My sense, and, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Patients are coming here, you know, are going in and, and getting services and weaving. I suppose if you have, maybe your kid or something, someone's sort of going to run an errand or something, but I think that would be a rarity, you know, most people are coming and going in, type of thing, so I don't, I don't know. Maybe Sunshine would have a better sense of that, but what I heard from them was, is that there's, there is circulation in and out of the site with the pedestrians now, and, and those folks are, have no place to be, they're, they're basically walking down a, walking down a
Shoulder.
steep driveway, and, and crossing the street to make it the sidewalk, so we're just trying to improve that situation.
Yep.
I mean, you're correct, it would be a rarity to have anyone drop off a patient. I mean, I'm not going to say it would never happen, but, you know, that certainly is not the norm. Usually people are either walking up and, and receiving services, or they're driving, parking, you know, staying for the duration, or they arrive through our, our van, which we do not have like a bus stop sort of scenario, we, we bring them into the parking lot and unload there.
I was just wondering, you know, given that there is no crosswalk at this point, and assuming that's going to be the case for, for a bit at least, to speak to Bill's concerns, I think is a good one, should that sidewalk kind of dead-end into some plantings, or even make a little bit of a little turn there into, I guess you wouldn't want to turn it into the driveway either, and if people want to keep going, they can, but not actually have the sidewalk just going right into the road?
I guess I would rather see the sidewalk just there, and, so people are, we're conveying people as safely as we, or people are being conveyed as safely as they can, as long as possible, and then it's, you know, across Highland Street at your own risk, but, but that at least separates them from the parking lot and the internal traffic.
Yeah.
I mean, it, I, I would be interested to see the engine, town engineer's recommendation for, for that area, looking at the existing roadmap. Cooper Street is probably, so the, Broadway does have a crosswalk to the west of this site, Cooper Street to the east, is the first street to the east, there's no crosswalk there, but there is a crosswalk at Avery Street. But like this site, this crosswalk at Avery Street crosses, crosses the road, but there's no sidewalk on Avery Street, so.
There's a parking lot right there.
Yeah, kind of like crosses into a parking lot.
Right, but I, I do think we should consider that, you know, if we were to request or require a crosswalk over Highland Street, there would be a curb cut required for ADA compliance on the north side of Highland Street, and, you know, that is certainly a, a burden beyond what they're planning currently. So, I, I would kind of wait, I'd like to hear what the engineer says about that.
I can ask Mike Vignali to look at it, and also talk to Joe from Highway about it again.
Okay, yeah.
Other comments from the board? June, has the applicant seen the staff report?
You know, I think I forgot to send it. No, I did send a draft earlier, so.
There's just a number of things of information needed, combining the, the lots that are actually, should be one, so the lot 49 and 48 together.
They did send a revised plan that you're not looking at, with some, a couple of the things I should just mention. So my comments were, yeah, about the lot numbering, that was really an issue on the towns part, on the tax map, so I did talk to them about it, so the final plans will, will update that. The garage, we've talked about, the engineer. Lighting, the original set of plans showed some existing light, some, it wasn't clear if it was new lighting in the parking lot, but I believe that they're going to use the existing poles and lights that are there, so there's really no change, as last I had heard, but we should ask, and when we get to maybe next month, you know, for some clarification about that. The landscaping showed the buffer, I asked what type of landscaping, they did email me and say a boxwoods, but maybe, but again, we've got another month, so I think they have a little bit of time to give some clarity to that. The issue about the sign, where it is currently, just kind of stuck there in the middle of the opening with a big wide curb cut, you know, that obviously is going to be removed, they've got a new location. I did find in a 1981 variance that can be up to 30 square feet, but it didn't specify where, so, you know, that, if they're moving it, it would lose its non-conformity anyway, so it kind of, you can't necessarily go to within the foot fifth, so they're showing it in the, within the setback, or they need to pull it back, they are aware of it. They can go within 10 feet if they reduce the size per the zoning ordinance, so I think they still need to figure that out on their own, but we've got another month at least to go through that. And then they did intend to dissolve the condominium at some point, we've actually looked into how they do. We've actually looked into how they do that, um, they need to figure out on their end legally, but the town, because the condominium is actually a form of a subdivision, so we would have them actually do a lot merger form, because it's in essence the same kinda thing. So, our record is mainly just to, um, for our tax assessing records, but it's a form that would go to the Registry of Deeds, so we've talked about that. I had mentioned to them about adding EV charging stations, this was something that had come up, just a thought, given the nature of the improvements, um, you know, obviously there may be more costs, I don't, they had indicated they're not interested in that at this time. I don't know how, we don't have anything, I would say, that can require it, I just was more of a suggestion, something I wanna think about if we revise our site plan review regulations, we might wanna add that in, in the future, but we don't have that ability now.
If, if that is something that the applicant would like to look into, the local utility is offering seventy-five percent incentives on commercial EV chargers up to twenty-five-hundred dollars each, so...
Maybe that will influence it.
If, if that's of interest to you, that's available.
Talk to Phil.
No, don't talk to me.
Phil to find out who to talk to. So, those were sort of items, but I, they're aware of them, yes, I had shared the tech, the, um, staff report, and, um, so I think the main outstanding piece is having the town engineer review this, and then we can go back over, they can, they can make some adjustments, come back with a revised plan, uh, something like that.
Yeah, I think...
I'm wondering if Peter's got comments on it, too.
Um, I think, uh, we've got until the seventeenth, till our, our next public hearing, so if we do continue this to the seventeenth, that should give plenty of time for engineer comments and for the applicant to, um, implement and make the changes that the engineer suggests, so, um, which I think should be pretty straightforward. So, I think for, on our end, if we do decide to, uh, vote to continue this for another month, then, um, then we should have, if, if the applicant can address all the engineer's concerns, um, then in updated plans, then we should, we should be, we should be pretty straightforward in, in February.
I agree. We still have a public hearing open?
I didn't close it?
No.
Well, you wanna continue it, not close it.
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna close it.
Right.
Um, I was gonna see if, uh, Peter, not to put you in the hot seat on your first meeting, you're welcome to bring up some of these comments or share them with June specifically. Um, it's up to you. Anything that's of substance that you think could be addressed for the applicant this evening, or?
I think the board, pardon me, I think the board has given, um, good counsel so far. The most important thing is to wait for the engineering's report.
Great. We do have a drainage report, too, that, um, I'll send on to Mike when he has that. They did, they did submit that, so...
Questions from the applicant about continuing the hearing?
The only question I have, June, is, um, when we last spoke about the, the one-watt versus two-watt situation, um, I, I, I don't know if the board realizes, but we, we submitted our, our application showing two watts, because at the time that we did the survey work, uh, that's what the town tax record showed. Um, and then, my understanding is June connected with, with assessing and staff, this was researching that, so it was, it was sort of curious, is there was a rear lot, um, with no frontage, um, and, you know, one of June's suggestions, we met back in the fall, was we might wanna merge that with, with, with the, with the primary frontage lot, um, if it served no purpose, which I think in general, we, we didn't have concern with. My understanding of it's, that, uh, the tax assessor, over the fall, eliminated the lot, um, and if you look at the GIS now, it's not there, so just the front lot is there. And, um, I didn't realize that until June brought it up. Um, and I checked with my surveyor, you know, because I'm, I'm not the boundary expert he is, um, and wanted to connect, just to sort of determine if he, he felt two watts existed, or, or if it should've been one, or, or, or what have you. More, I don't think we have a real problem with making it one lot, I just wanna make sure if we're changing something that we get it done correctly, so that doesn't create a title problem or some other problem down the road. And the surveyor, um, you know, the existing condition plan, which was submitted as part of the set, shows the two watts, because that's what tax records showed at the time, and the area of those lots matched the, I think it's a late eighties condo plan, which defined convertible land of the condo, uh, uh, which matched, it sort of matched the G I, GIS rear lot. So, it was almost, the surveyor sort of acknowledged it, it was almost like this, at some point in time, the tax assessor, uh, interpreted that condo plan to mean that, that, um, the lot forty-nine, the rear lot, existed, when in fact, there's no record of vacancy that that lot was ever created by subdivision. It, it appears it was interpreted from a condo plan to create a tax lot that maybe shouldn't have never been. The town has removed that lot from the records. Our concern as an applicant, and, and, and I know that the applicant has reached out to their attorney about it, is that if we're gonna fix this, let's just actually fix it correctly, and I don't know if just, just to make it disappear on a tax record is necessarily the proper way to handle it, so, um, I think the, the end goal of giving one lot is, is we're okay with, but I think we wanna just revisit how about it.
Our, our zoning ordinance actually addresses this topic in, in our new, uh, our, our proposed amendments actually address lots that have been involuntarily merged by the selectmen, um, which might be this case, but if it was never subdivided, I mean, you know, ultimately it, I think it falls back to the deed description for the lot, is it one parcel? Or that, that was, if there's never been a subdivision recorded and it was always just transferred as one parcel, it's still one parcel, but if it was ever legally subdivided, we could do a voluntary merger.
Right, so we, I'd, I will look into this further, I, if we have a deed for the property, it might help to see that, 'cause sometimes a deed will list lot one and lot two, if that happens to be from an old deed, that, that's the case if we can go back that far. Um, but again, the surveyor should check that. If the surveyor hasn't found anything, what I think happened was when the condominium, it shows up on a condominium plan from eighty-one, somewhere in, no, um, ninety, when they'd created the condominium, they have on the plan that back part, which was interpreted to be lot forty-nine, to be convertible land, and then condominiums, they can sometimes reserve like undeveloped land that could be converted later to add more buildings to more office condominium, that kinda thing. So, that's really what that definition is. So, I think what happened, when somebody took that plan, there's like a line and shows, "Hey, this back part is convertible land," they just interpreted that as a, and sometimes, you know, assessing records are like that. So, I guess we've been sending out two tax bills, I'll verify that again, um, just for whatever misunderstanding, and nobody caught it. So, yes, they did just kinda remove that line, poof, it's gone, based on that interpretation, whether that was correct, you know, like, the assessing people can do that, um, based on what knowledge they have. If it is two lots, then it does need to go through a lot merger, we can't, we can't merge it for them. Um, there are state statutes about that, that have had some amendments recently, but...
Right.
So, we will look into that again, but it does appear, it's very clear on the condominium plan that that was convertible land, and I think probably nineteen ninety or somewhere after that, it was, an assessor just looked at that as a separate lot, somewhat incorrectly.
Okay. All right, so, June, you'll look into that. I think we need a motion to continue the hearing until February seventeenth. Make a motion to continue it till seventeen, you?
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of continuing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, extensions?
Thank you.
Great. See you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right, moving on in the agenda, any informational or pre-application reviews?
I've gotten just a mess here tonight. Uh, no. Everything, I can think of.
Um, other business?
Uh, don't, don't we have, um, guardrail designs?
Yes.
Sorry.
Got three things here, just updates. Um, I sent out to you the guardrail design. I do have a few copies here, um, it's, so what has happened, uh, if you remember, the, the guardrail that, um, maybe you can share, I tried to, come on. This is some standard type of DOT guardrail, for those of you that, you know, have guardrail. We scrutinized it, we, this afternoon at the office.
I have the electric version, yeah.
I'm a committed man, really, but...
Um, there's two sides to that, so...
I guess we have it.
Aroma Jones put in guardrail coming in onto their site, that what got installed was not what was on the plan, all right? So, during a final inspection, uh, Mike Vignelli noticed that and raised it as an issue, and he said, "Well, it's not what they said on the plan." So, um, they were about ready to try to open, if you recall, I updated you back a few, few months ago, um, we did not feel that was worthy of holding their certificate of occupancy, so we allowed them to open with the caveat that they did sign a letter saying, um, they weren't gonna hold the town liable in case anybody hit it and had any problems. It is all on their site, um, and we gave them till the, I just picked a date, January tenth, I have no idea why, that they could come forward and give a revised plan, 'cause basically what was on the plan was a very beefy, robust, heavy-duty kinda I-93 kinda style guardrail, I guess. So, they realized that was somewhat of a mistake, and then with the RAP City development, going into that same site potentially, they've got, they were repeating that same type of guardrail. Um, so we wanna have it match, so they did come in on January tenth with a revised, um, this drawing of the standard guardrail, so I did ask them to show us, you know, 'cause I'm not, I'm not familiar with guardrail planning, so this was, I think, just a clip probably from, I don't know, Google or something, of, this is somewhat what, I think it's a post, a wooden post with a weathered metal, brown metal, is what your, their new proposal is. They did not give me a picture of what the old one, the original one was. So, they're asking for permission, um, to have their originally designed guardrail on-site to be changed to this, but it would also align and go up along Boulder Point Road when the RAP City piece happens. So, it'd all be the same, it's not as all metal steel kind of thing. It's DOT approved, Mike Vignelli looked it over, he said it looked fine by, you know, as a standard safety feature, made sense. The only thing was they didn't have the end where it ties in at the end, 'cause that's a piece, you know, if somebody hits it, they had to redesign, they didn't give that detail or didn't do it properly or something. So, um, they just, at least we can have them update that piece, but if, in general, you're okay. I just felt this was enough of a change, you know, to make the board aware that we wanna do this. Again, it's a safe type of, you know, highway guardrail that, um, it seems, and Mike has said it's okay.
And this will get updated when RAP City and the as-built plans will all reflect what this is, is that...
We gave them a certain date by May to, to pull out what's there and reinstall the new, um, so this is what they're asking for. We did get, um, additional letter of credit verification, that they're maintaining their credit line, you know, just in case they don't do it, we have the funds, access to the funds to pu- do it ourselves if we, we don't wanna go down that path, but, I don't wanna go into putting...
Do you need a vote from us, or just sort of a general, like...
I think a vote would be good, you know, it doesn't hurt to have that, just for the record, saying that you, if you would approve.
So, we would need to vote on, or someone would need to make a motion that we approve the different guardrail for the Aroma Jones property?
I'm curious, did, did Mike Vignelli weigh in on the suitability of what they have there for parking lot? Did, did he say that that would actually be okay, and if they just updated their plan to show that, that would be an option?
He, um...
I, I think one of the elements that's missing is, they had showed the last element to go from a post down to the ground, so that any traffic hitting it wouldn't hit a post, they would, there would be, kinda be a ramp, but...
It's just a wooden structure now, and what he said is it's more typical to have that kinda guardrail just on a parking lot, so when you pull in, you just kinda bump it and don't, you know, just as a, almost like a visual barrier. It's not really a safety-designed guardrail for somebody turning in and pulling on. He said onsite it might not be that big a deal, but we want it to match, and he said it's not adequate for coming up on Boulder Point, and given the curve, and given that there's gonna be, you know, another business, he, his recommendation was to have something that was more safe there. And they, they admitted that they had it on the plan, the contractor just didn't do it right, so, and they missed it, so, they've been good to work with on it, I have to say, Mike, um, Pelletier.
Yeah.
The three Mikes.
Aesthetically, what they have...
Mike, again, they owns the site, Mike Pelletier's, and Roma Jones', and Mike, Mike Vignelli.
I, I didn't think the aesthetics of what they have there was that bad, but from a safety perspective, it may not be, it may not be suitable for what they're proposing in the future.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, so, I move we accept a new guardrail design for the Aroma Jones' site?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Do we also have to accept it for the other site?
No, 'cause that's still pending, they still have to finalize.
Okay.
Yeah, they will cha- make that change on the other one, but there's gonna be the other changes, I think, too, that they'll want to...
Sounds good.
All right, all those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you have a design, or do you have a picture?
Uh...
It's not the...
Oh, we, we have, it's shown on the, the locations are shown on the plan, which we approved.
On the, yeah, we have the site, this is from the site plan that, at Aroma Jones' is now built, I actually have the as-built somewhere, I don't think I brought up the whole file.
That's a good question.
So, this will go where the existing guardrail is, and we'll ask them to update that plan, but the, the, it was about this detail in the plan set, it's changing out the guardrail detail that they had. Does that make sense? Is that what you're asking?
These are the, this is the detail, this is what it looks like.
Right.
But there's also a plan that shows the locations.
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking about? No. Would you like to clarify?
Oh, I, uh, you have a plan that shows guardrail, true.
Yes.
You have a picture that shows guardrail, absolutely.
Yeah.
One is from Spain, one is from Italy, they're not the same. From what I see here, you do not have a guardrail detailed.
So, that, you're saying, that guard...
Or, excuse me, guardrail design, specific design. I, I'm just asking the question. I, I think, um, if you're going to make a motion and a vote specifically to approve, you may want to have something that you are specifically approving.
What, so what are we missing here? I, I'm, I'm confused, because...
You wanna see that in the plan set, kind of?
Well, I believe you said Mike has seen the photo.
Mike had seen the DOT, the two-sided elevens by seventeen.
Right, right.
I, yeah. Do you not see that sheet? Sorry.
Yeah.
No, he, he...
This, I didn't see this one, but this is...
It's on the other side.
There's two sides to that, sorry, yeah, try to...
That's the side that you were looking at.
Yeah. This is a standard template from DOT.
And they, the engineer for Aroma Jones sent the photo, 'cause I asked to tell it, show us what that looks like, 'cause I figured that would help. So, it's got wooden posts, and he said the weathered, um, brown steel.
That's a screen grab from, uh, Google Earth.
Yeah, I know.
That's a street view.
I mean, it's just, it's a visual, so we can take this and see what it looks like. But the location, the layout, is on an existing plan that we have approved, it just wasn't the right one.
Yeah, so they'll have to update that plan set, but before they go to do that, that's, they wanted sort of approval of this design, so I can have them...
Basically, just a cut sheet, yeah.
You're exactly right.
Yes.
That's what I thought. You're exactly right. So, I'm only asking the question that if you're going to approve a, a design, or an alternate, or a resubmital, from a cut sheet, it should be specific to the site. Guardrail is designed based on all sorts of criteria, grade, speed, height, crashworthiness, and you have a typical cut sheet and a photo.
Could I make a suggestion that you amend the motion to say something like, you, in concept, approve that change, but you wanna see it incorporated into the plan set?
That we need that, to be incorporated into the as-built plans?
Is that, would that help? Not the as-built, the actual design plan.
Okay.
It should be a resubmital on that, shouldn't it, with all of that information? On that original that they submitted, is that right? 'Cause they're, they're basically changing it. So, now they've submitted this cut sheet for this, but now the rest of it, the safety of it, all of the, the stuff, that all needs to be resubmitted, so should they do that?
I could do a screen share here to show you the plan set, hold on. 'Cause I know, Peter, you weren't, uh, part of the...
No, that, no, just, hold on.
My understanding is we're giving an approval from the go-ahead to build this and amend in the as-built, for this railing. in the as-built for the railing.
Yeah. Because there is. That sheet that's, sorry, let me go back. So the guardrail that we're talking about is along this curve here. Can you see? So they show us the location, this is the guardrail section here. All right. And on the plan set, a couple pages later, they had the detail for concrete anchor for short guardrail post, steel-backed timber guardrail.
Oh, interesting.
So that, so that, my understanding was the diagram, the DOT standard plan diagram basically going here instead. And Mike made a comment that they needed to revise the end cap to it, because that was not adequate. Or service, I think it was maybe on the next sheet, if I remember. No. Sign and post. I'm sorry, it's hard to just find all this right immediately.
I don't know what else to say.
It's the planting. There was.
Water and sewer lines.
Yeah. This looks like, to me, like the details about the guardrail that they had originally That steel-backed timber guardrail. What, would it be satisfactory to say, in concept, the board is okay with the change, but they'd like to see the detail brought into the plan set for Mike to look at? Okay. You want to amend your motion to that?
Yes.
I'll amend my second to support that.
All right. Are we good with that? Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
And the change they'll put on the as-built? Will they do that? Yeah, once they fill it. We'll get a revised as-built.
All right. Update on Riverside Landing?
Conservation easements first. The select board did decide to go ahead with the easements as presented. Conservation Commission decided they were acceptable. So now I've given them to our attorney for review, and they did catch in the description, kind of some details about the description of the property need to be cleaned up because there was encumbrances, that now that subdivisions happen, those need to be reviewed, removed. So it was just sort of sloppy on that part. But otherwise, we're getting very close on finalizing those, I would say. And then Friday, last Friday, late in the day, I got trail easement. I reviewed it. Rebecca's looked at it. I passed it on also. There's a fair amount of responsibilities for the town, so I also sent it to Bill Bolton to ask, just for the select board to be aware of. And I've passed that on to our attorney for his review of it. So that's still pending out there. And I got, yeah, they seem like they're getting closer to wanting these resolved fairly quickly now, so doing the best I can to keep up with it. And so we do have that at least, so that's good. As we approach spring, I'm not sure if there will be more activity coming out there or not. I have not heard directly, I haven't asked Mike McGinley directly yet, but I can. So one step at a time.
Any other updates?
Um, yes. The biggest update is we have hired a new assistant planner, which I'm excited about. And we're still waiting for one final piece of paperwork and all that. But the anticipation is he will start on January thirty-first. So hopefully, in two weeks at our next meeting, you can all meet him, and I'll share more details about his background. He's, has worked as a planner, most recently in Manchester and Alabama. But he doesn't have many years of experience, but seems very eager. So I'm excited about helping him to get, get to know all of you and you to know him. So hopefully, next meeting, I think it'll be actually a fun meeting if we are reviewing master plan and that kind of stuff, a great way for him to start, so. More to follow on that. So that was my big announcement.
All right. Zach, the CIP.
Yes. So June had put into the budget for the coming year some money to start work on a CIP again. And the select board is all very much in favor of doing that. So it is moving forward into the next budget cycle. Along those lines, though, we would like to request that the planning board get a CIP subcommittee reformed, so that some of the inventory work can start before the budget even begins, before the cycle begins. Honestly, even if the money gets shot down, the select board believes it's a significant priority to get a capital improvement plan in place so that we can start thinking about our major capital investments over the coming, probably ten-year period is what makes sense. But we think it's a big deal. June has advocated for it pretty heavily. And so, yeah, so that's, the request is that we get the planning board to reform a CIP subcommittee to kind of get out in front of that, start the inventory work, and get as much of a jump on it. And then hopefully, we'll have some funding to do some analysis and actual planning around producing that plan.
That's great. What is a deadline? Like, when do you need a committee? How many planning board members? Do we want community members?
I think the RSA says there has to be at least one planning board member. They recommend having a select board member, and then beyond that, it's sort of to be determined.
Yeah.
Good idea to have a member of the budget committee, and then it's good to invite Department heads, police chief, fire chief, road agent, if they're available.
Sorry, did you just volunteer to be the planning board?
I can. If nobody else wants to, I will.
I think it would be a great role for you, but I didn't want to just voluntold you.
Other people can be on it, too.
That'd be awesome. Thank you for stepping up.
My suggestion, maybe I can pull together some CIP information and, you know, even a few PowerPoint slides, if you don't mind me doing that again, to just kind of go through what the roles are. There's sort of, I think, five key steps. You know, it's inventorying, kind of doing some financial analysis, but with the inventory also has to come kind of a ranking of priorities. Yeah. So you kind of do a little bit of risk assessment. You know, department heads will have to chime in on that, but, you know, each department's going to advocate, be an advocate for everything they have is the priority. So you're going to, you know, the committee has to sort out that new fire truck versus the ambulance versus the police cruiser versus the dump truck versus, you know, the new roof on Town Hall or whatever, you know, those things. We're not going to be able to capture everything in this first go-around. You know, there'll be things that are going to be, especially when we get down to the highway equipment, there's an awful lot of stuff, you know, and police, radios.
Truck, ambulances.
Yeah, it's a big, and then if we bring in roads, bridges, stormwater, we don't even have that data, so those might be in another couple of years. We are working towards doing a stormwater asset management program. We're getting a $30,000 grant from DES. And we have a request for qualifications out right now for, try to find an engineering firm to work with us on that. And firms are busy, and, you know, we'll see what we get. There's very few firms that have really done this type of work. It'll be about a two-year project where it's really assessing the stormwater drainage system in town, have to make some decisions on, you know, do you cover a bigger area and get less detail, or smaller area and more detail, and then computerizing it, and then a lot of effort. We have to kind of figure out how much of that grant we put into training to get, you know, using an equipment, maybe iPads, cell phones, where somebody can use the GIS kind of components out in the field. Water and Sewer's done this, and it's amazing, you know, they can stand on your street and basically find, you know, know where the lines are, more or less. Maybe it isn't always 100% accurate, but then they can go into the database and find out, well, this line was replaced last in whatever year, and it's a 10-inch pipe or whatever. That's the kind of robustness that, you know, we don't have that for our stormwater system of, so.
I think it would be really helpful to get an explanation of capital improvement planning.
Okay.
So we could, can we do that next?
I can try to get something together. I can't, I can get something together. I mean, being the best lecturer ever.
There may be a resource out there already.
Yeah, I've got some stuff pulled together, so I kind of need to get my head around it sort of by necessity.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking our assistant planner might be able to help with the inventory.
Well, that's great news. That's something that's obviously long overdue.
Yep.
So.
Glad to hear the selectmen support the process. And it's, for my, it's probably a big stretch for Department heads to get their head around what we're asking for the first year. But it also, once you do it a couple of years, they start thinking like, all right, so, you know, they start throughout the year, they'll start making notes about like, or taking, you know, thinking about, all right, yeah, this grader, we can repair it this year, but we're going to need to replace it in three or four years, and we didn't put it on our CIP, we really should, or.
And as a board, that's the thing we've been struggling with, is a highway manager comes in and says, we broke this plow, I need a replacement plow. And it's like, is this in the plan?
Right.
Did you break this plow the year it was going to die? Did you break this plow in the middle of its life cycle? Did we repair it? You know, it's, it's very challenging without a plan. And so we end up asking a lot of questions, rather than just being able to open up a plan and say, okay, we know at this.
Right.
We know what we were doing here, and we're now either ahead or behind on this thing.
Great. All right. So if, if all goes well, we can maybe learn a little more next meeting, or maybe the subsequent work session.
Yeah.
And just a reminder that we did have homework for next work session, and that's to.
John.
To look at the site plan review and subdivision regulations in the master, yes, in the master plan, particularly the implementation chapter and where it mentions what we would like to, sort of, there are some checklist items for the subdivision and site plan regs.
I'll make sure to get on that.
Anything else from the folks? Perhaps the magic motion.
We don't have any public comments.
Oh, any public comments left this evening? Thanks, Frank. Anything from the folks at home? All right. Who's doing the honors this evening?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. And there I sit.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Aye.